All right, we will open up the February 15th Committee of the Whole Meeting. And first on our agenda is the Northland Arboretum. Candace, if you could come set if you'd like, or stand, whatever.
You want to sit down, or you want to stand?
I will stand. This is great, thanks, guys.
Can I do an introduction?
What's that?
Can I do an introduction?
Absolutely.
Members, this is Candace Zimmerman. She's the relatively new Executive Director of the Northland Arboretum. She is here today to talk to us about trying to get the arboretum designated as a Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Park designation. There needs to be a local unit of government that is the sponsor for such a resolution. Candace is going to walk through a little bit of the background, and what they need, and why they're interested.
Yes, so thank you, guys, for the opportunity to present today. I'd love to be able to share some arb updates, as well as the strategic plan, which was recently approved by my board, is in front of you. Some very exciting things to share there. And then, of course, ask for the partnership in the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails designation. So, in my two years as the Director, I started right before COVID hit, so I was there four days, and then everything shut down. So, we've seen our challenges, but we're very positive about the future and our plans that we've put in place in the two years that I've been here. We are very optimistic about the future, and I'd like to be able to share some of those plans today. So, since I've been in the Director Chair, what we have done is stick with our core pillars, which are education, recreation, and conservation. We really try to make goals within each of those pillars on a daily basis. And you'll see that our strategic plan is broken out into those categories as well. But it all kind of ties into one another. So, you'll see that a goal underneath education very much affects our goals under conservation as well. So, we have a very unique and strong mission, I believe, in order to serve the residents of Crow Wing County. Some of the specific things that we've done are, we launched a free, community-wide event called our Arbor Day Event, and that's coming up this year on April 30th. And we have lots of partners at the table for that as well. It's, the reason we love this event so much is it fits right in with our mission, gets a lot of people out at the arb, builds awareness, and it's also a completely free event for everyone. So, we love seeing how many people rallied behind our first year last year. Despite everything that was happening, we saw 1,000 people attend that event, and we're hoping for 1,200 this year. We have partners such as the Master Gardeners that help out with that, our Brainerd Lakes Master Naturalists, and then multiple nonprofit organizations as well. We've also seen a increase in our membership. So, when I walked in, we had a membership base of about 900. We're sitting at about 1,100 right now, members of the arb, and that's tracked by our annual membership. And we've seen a lot more traffic coming through in the last year or so as well. So, that means more people, more people getting curiosity sparked by what they're witnessing, more people that were able to touch and be able to provide that nature-based curriculum to, and more people just getting in touch with nature, because that's our overall mission. We have made some grounds improvements as we can. Being a fiscally responsible organization, we've been able to focus on some of our outdoor structures. We do have plans to improve additional structures going forward, which I will share here shortly. But we've made some great improvements as far as our first impressions, and then we just want to take that a step further in the years to come. We've also built some really solid relationships in the last two years. We have helped to start a collaboration, a nature-focused collaboration, called the Nature Network, in partnership with the YMCA, Kinship Partners, Mount Skegull, and Wonder Trek Children's Museum. And that's just helping our reach go that much further beyond our property lines, outside the Brainerd Lakes area and into the more rural areas of the county, which is really exciting to see. And we do have more plans to reach even farther here in the future with added staff capacity, if we happen to get approved for some grants here coming up. So, overall, we're connecting, on average, with about 9,000 people per year underneath those core pillars, which is a very exciting thing to see, and we're hoping that number, we will see that number increase. So, what we need to do going forward, we've done some great things, but we have some plans going forward. And that's where our strategic plan comes in, which is sitting right in front of you. Our each objective, like I said, falls underneath one of our pillars, but overall, the message is to build awareness. I think the arboretum has been a hidden gem for too long, and we need to bring it out into the community and make it a sparkling diamond, and then just build on that momentum, and get more people to realize that it's a true community asset. So, underneath the conservation bucket, we do want to restore some of the critical habitats that we have there on our 420 acres. Underneath our education bucket, we would love to be able to hire a education coordinator that will improve our nature-based curriculum and build outreach capacity in the community. We'd really love to be able to go outside of our visitor's center and place someone within the school districts around the county in order to get them, again, to spark that curiosity and get them connected to nature. And then underneath our recreation bucket, it's really about physical and mental health and well-being. We want to get people active. We want them to be mindful when they are in nature, step away from their phones and their screens for a little while, and really connect with the trees and the trails. So, this is where our desire to partner with Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails System comes in. So, the Parks and Trails Commission, their goals very much align with the goals of the arb. It's really to get people connected to the outdoors, stay physically active, and their collaboration is, their goal is to help us stay up-to-date on the community needs, connect with other nature-focused nonprofits and other organizations, and then the designation will potentially help us be eligible for funding going forward. So, the designation also benefits county residents, because it'll help the arboretum reach a larger, help us reach a larger width for our curriculum. The funding eligibility, or funding opportunities may help us with that staff capacity. It'll help us with a capacity to network and build our reach and our awareness even farther. And once that awareness comes in, hopefully, the tourism will come into the county as well, providing an economic impact to all the residents here. So, my ask today is to consider the resolution and to be a joint applicant in the designation application, and give us a chance to reach more people throughout the county. Thank you.
Any questions? Is this the resolution that we're going to be seeing?
No, that was the one question I had. Do you have a draft?
The draft resolution, I can certainly send, again, forwards, so that you guys can be presented with it.
Okay.
And I think what the resolution would say is that we're asking for them to designate the Northland Arboretum as a Greater Minnesota Regional Park.
Correct.
Which, with a strategic plan, then allows them to apply for grant funds to do some of what they would like to do in their strategic plan.
So, does this, what does this, where will this fall at, under the county's, I guess, responsibility?
We, I don't know how much of the arb is tax-forfeited land, but I know that a good chunk of the arb is us. And so, that's our tie-in to the arb. We have a long history back to its original formation. This, I would liken this to what we do with snowmobile trail clubs. You can't, you know, if you want to put in a new recreational trail, you have to have a strategic plan, you have to be looking forward, then you can apply for funds, this, and we do that on behalf of them. And so, it's, I see this as very similar to what we do with other recreation opportunities in the outdoor space.
Okay. Paul, did you have?
Yeah, I guess, just a question. I like the concept, as long as we're not, they're not asking, you're not asking for any money from Crow Wing County now or in the future, correct?
Not at this time. I'm not making a formal request, no. Really, the capacity would come from the arboretum staff to apply for the designation, and then submit the master plan to the commission. And beyond that, it really has to do with whether they accept the application or not.
But when you just, you just said, "Not at this time," you're not going to be asking for, being that we partnered with you, you're not going to come back and ask for a contribution in the future, I'm hoping. Otherwise, I don't think I can support this.
Right, it is not, it's not one of the eligibility guidelines to have Crow Wing County financially support the designation. No, that's not, that's not one of the eligibility guidelines.
It's not tied at all to this designation, Paul. What I, I think probably the hesitation is, forever is a mighty long time. And so, it's not related to this application. There's no financial ask associated with this application. I think Candace would probably be reluctant to say that she's never going to ever ask Crow Wing County for any resource.
But this ask today is not asking for any, any financial assistance, correct?
That is correct.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I don't have questions, but I do support this. I think this is a great opportunity with the overall mission of our county to provide recreational opportunities. We have a big footprint in this outlined area that you have on your map. So, we have an area that is ours, and we encourage people to come to our area. And I think the more that area gets enhanced is a plus for us. It's no different than the Fire Tower up north, or South Long Lake, Milford Mine. They're all items or recreational opportunities to draw people here. You throw in the educational, the Milford Mine has a great education component to it, so does the Fire Tower up north. I'm not sure, Paul, what you're going to do about educating people on South Long Lake, but you can certainly put in for that. But I think this is another piece of property within our county that has the opportunity to draw people to it for the purposes that they're providing. So, personally, I support this.
I think with the, you know, the, Mr. Chair, with the skiing that's going on, the schools using the facility out there, there's a lot of activity.
It fits well with what we're doing. Paul, I'm sure you have a comeback for Steve.
Well, yeah, I do. Actually, our lake association, we have a fishing contest for children, and that's where it kind of is based out of, is the South Long Lake Park every summer there. So, the park is used for teaching kids how to fish. So, I think that's a good thing.
Won't argue with that, Paul. So, we don't have an argument, then.
You got my easy today.
Chair, we will enclose this in your packet for the next board meeting for action. Do you want it under your consent calendar, or would you like to have Candace come back and present again?
Consent for me.
Consent is fine with me.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Send me a copy of the resolution, Candace.
All right. Item two is Community Services. Okay.
Is this packets?
This was in the handouts, yep. That were sent out ahead of time, but I just made color cards.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. We agreed not to talk today.
No.
Chelsea, did you get one?
Yeah, I got her.
Number eight.
Good morning. Tammy Luick, Adult Services Manager over at Community Services. I've come a couple of times and to talk about state-operated services, and today, I'm also going to share a little bit about how we're working to try to evaluate this area of service as well. So, in your packet, I had the state facility summary for 2021. I've been trying to keep this form very similar, so that you get used to it. So, state facility costs includes, include the cost of care for those that are at Anoka Regional Treatment Center. For more than 30 days, we have to pay 20% of their cost of care. Those under commitment that no longer meet medical criteria at either Anoka or at one of our CBHHs across the state, you'll hear that be referenced as DNMC. So, that's another piece of our costs. Our mentally ill and dangerous population, and then our sexually dangerous population. The current daily rate at Anoka is 1615, and at the CBHH, it's 1644. As I indicated, counties are responsible for 100% of the daily cost when an individual no longer meets medical criteria, DNMC, in those inpatient hospital settings. As you can see, as you look down at the graphs, and actually, well, let's flip to the other side just for a moment, just so you can kind of see what was happening with annual DNMC. So, on the second graph, the annual DNMC only, you can see that we, back in 2018, we were at 622,000, 594,000 in 2019. In 2020, we were at 29,602, and 2021, 28,962. So, we've brought that down pretty significantly.
Tammy, how, what did you do to bring those numbers down like that?
So, that kind of speaks to the second handout that I had, which was Nathan Bertram had put together a results-based accountability, an RBA for us, and to look at how we could bring down these costs, these DNMC costs, be mindful of the budget, and yet, you know, how do we manage commitments? I mean, individuals that are committed are considered danger to sell for others. And if you look in this, we haven't really, our, the actual numbers of people that are committed has not gone down. Just see here, that those numbers are very similar. We screen about 100 individuals a year, and we're committing about 60, I would say. And so, and that's been pretty consistent. So, even back when we had those, that 594,000, 600,000, those same things were happening. So, two things that have happened that I think have been, have really attributed to the reduction is, the Adult Mental Health Team has met, has started meeting, where they started meeting weekly. We probably started this about two, three years ago now. Yesterday, I sat in on the commitment review meeting that they held. They reviewed 25 individuals currently that we are looking at, either are sitting in a state hospital or a community hospital. Seven of them are looking at commitment or are committed. 14 were sitting in community hospitals or in the community at large, and we're looking at commitments and screening them. And then four were in step-down programs. So, I think that has helped in our efforts to really just be paying very close attention to these individuals and what their service needs are. And then, the other, other big impact was the Regional Transition Specialist that we, it's a shared resource through Sourcewell, that we employ a full-time staff person who we can make referrals for, for individuals that are in these state facility hospital placements, and/or they can be in a community hospital as well. And what Mike does is he's really looking for what is going to be the, like, what's their discharge plan? So, we, you know, before, we had our case managers trying to do that, along with their 30-some cases. And now, Mike assists that case manager in really being focused on their placement needs after they're discharged. So, I think that really did assist us in trying to find placement options for these individuals in a timely fashion. So, the goal for our transition specialist is to have, to keep DNMC days to under five. And he averaged two DNMC days per individual in, for the region over the course of the last year. We were a little higher than that. I think Nathan's got it in this report here on page two. Last year, our DNMC days were seven per, and I think we had three individuals that, or no, yeah, three, you can see on this report. So...
Tammy, what do we contribute to Sourcewell for this?
Our contribution, so, the position is 85,000, and it's covered through the Adult Mental Health Initiative. So, right now, we're not, we're not supporting it at least through any county levy dollars. It's being supported by the Region Five Adult Mental Health Initiative.
And we're getting this kind of savings?
Yes.
Okay.
You should be aware that Tammy was presenting on this topic a couple of years back. I saw her at an AMC conference talking about this, I think, specific issue, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Mm-hmm.
She was on a work group of two, three counties statewide that were looking at this issue, once the state started charging us for does-not-meet-medical-criteria. And so, I would credit Tammy and her staff for inventing the solution, and then helping other counties to see what it can produce. This is part of why we are seeing such good budget performance out of Community Services. It's a half a million contribution to their operational budget performance. At some point, we probably will need to realign where that budget is. But it has produced some significant operational savings over time.
The other thing that we did, and just going back to the front page of the state facility summary, is I don't know if we were doing a really good job in the past of really showing you those other costs. So, I think it's just kind of important to reflect on that as well. So, we had one individual in 2021 that we, that was in a state facility over the 30 days, that we had to pay that 20% cost of care at 12,842. Our sexually dangerous, we have 13 individuals that are currently held in the state facility. And you can see the cost there at the 276,786. And then our mentally ill and dangerous population. And last year, for most there, you're seeing the number four there. We had three individuals, but then another person was admitted, and then one person was discharged. Which you will see an email from me this week. Two things will be coming to board next week. One is a Transitions to Community Grant for one of our mentally ill and dangerous individuals. So, the state has funds that they're going to reimburse us for, for the mentally ill and dangerous person that we had discharged from St. Peter. And so, that will be one thing that, I'll send an email about that this week, and then it'll be on the board agenda for next week. And then, the other thing, and you've heard me talk about this a little bit with our ARPA fund request, is just how do we continue to develop our resources locally? And so, the other thing that'll be coming forward is an ERTS development that is being looked at or being requested from Better Outlook Minnesota. This is a provider that would like to open two ERTS facilities in Baxter. It's my understanding that they've been approved by Baxter for six beds per each of these places. This is, Commissioner Barrows can probably, you know what this is. It's Intensive Residential Community Treatment Program, and it can be used on the front end. So, if we have somebody in the emergency department that needs this level of care, they don't need to go to an inpatient setting, or maybe they do. But then this gives them an option to go to this 90-day, up to 90-day program to receive additional mental health services. Currently, the only two ERTSes that we are, that we have in our region are ran by the state, and you have to be committed to go to them. So, we use them as step downs right now. So, if you're at Anoka, you would potentially go to one of these as a step down as you come back into the community. Back seven, eight years ago, when resources weren't as tight as they are today, we were able to make referrals to those directly in advance of somebody being committed, which is what we'd like to see again. So, that'll be another, they're looking for a letter of need based on statute. They do need to come to the county board as the mental health authority to seek that statement of need from you. You don't have to support it. The state could potentially still take their request, but they are asked to ask for it. So, that'll be the other thing you'll be seeing on the board agenda for next week.
I've got a question.
Yep.
ERTS, is that like a acronym? What does that mean?
Intensive Residential Treatment Services. And so, they provide up to 90 days of mental health treatment for an individual that maybe isn't quite ready to be in the community. So, they can work on medication stabilization, they can work on independent living, coping skills, those sorts of things while they're at that facility.
Is that a private facility?
The one that, the one that I will be bringing forward next week to the board is a private provider. The provider is called Better Outlook Minnesota, and the program here locally will be called Crow Wing County Wellness.
And then, once they, once they go into this facility, and the 90 days starts, and 90 days is done, what happens if that person is not, I don't know, I don't know which word to use. If they're not well, or they're not, if that, if they need more time, what happens after that 90 days?
Commissioner Coring, they can request an extension of the 90 days. It's just, that's kind of the state licensing rule, you know, that they, it's up to 90 days, and then if they needed to be there longer, and they felt that that was needed or appropriate, they could request an exception. They also, we also might look at, okay, well, maybe they can't return home, but maybe we could look at supportive housing, or, you know, there's other options that maybe we could, that would be recommended at the end of their ERTS placement.
And then, and then their reimbursement comes from DHS, or it comes through us? Or how does that, how does the, do they?
Typically, these services are paid through medical assistance or private insurance, if they'll cover. Sometimes that can be challenging. As you know, with private insurance, they don't always support some of these services for the length of time that maybe medical assistance would.
Okay.
If that happens, we do, I mean, in those situations, we do look at those, and we have some dollars through our Adult Mental Health Initiative that we can pay for what we call uncompensated care, or care that isn't covered by private insurance. And we take those on by case-by-case issue.
So, I guess another question I have then is, is it strictly a Crow Wing County facility where, I'm having a hard time trying to figure out the right words. But, okay, so, I'm sure, as a private vendor, they want to keep those beds full. So, if somebody from Ely needs a bed, would they transport them down to this facility? And then, if the beds are all full, there wouldn't really be any beds for any Crow Wing County residents, correct?
Correct. Commissioner Coring, with those types of, with these types of services, I mean, we do really work hard to be aware of any openings that they have, and try to fill those, at least from our county and/or region. You know, when you look at our Safe Harbor Crisis Services, the Crisis Residential Program, we have six beds, and, you know, I think most of the time, the largest percentage is coming out of our region that are being served there. But those services are available to other people across the state. Just like right now, because we don't have private ERTS available to us in Crow Wing County, we utilize, there's an ERTS, I mean, there's ERTS in Duluth, in Rochester. And so, you know, it's kind of unfortunate that individuals from our community have to go to such far places to get these types of services, and be away from their informal and formal supports.
So, if I, I'll just clarify for Commissioner Coring, that one of the original missions of the state, when they closed the big facilities and opened the CBHHs, was to keep these individuals as close to home as possible, so there was a good support system for them. That never happened, Commissioner. And this is now their attempt to come back. They do have those, a couple state ERTS out there, but like Tammy is referencing, you have to first be committed, and we're trying to get ahead of that game. And so, these private ones provide that opportunity as a kind of a step down, because we want to get them out of those facilities where we're paying the $1,600 a day as quickly as we can. But they do need additional assistance. Now, listening to Tammy, what I appreciate is, there's an opportunity for private ERTS to be developed, and we are one of the, we have the fewest in our region, when I look at your chart, Tammy, that you provided for us. And we should be able to gather more of those opportunities for ourselves. Having said that, the long term is, there still needs to be additional step downs from those facilities, because you're building capacity, but there's an end to that capacity. And then, where's, what's the next step? Is it room and board? Is it whatever the other living spaces they have to go to? And that's still in flux, as far as I'm concerned. But we don't have enough of these ERTS, and I think this is a great opportunity. And if we can keep them in our county, that's wonderful. But currently, they're going, I know of one family that had to send one of their siblings 250 miles from here. Now, if that's keeping them close to home, I don't see that. But that's on DHS, and where they didn't follow through with their original mission. So, thank you very much.
So, another question, another question is, so, what the ask is, is so, when this ERTS puts their application in, one of the requirements is to have a letter of support from Crow Wing, the Coring County Board of Commissioners, correct?
It's a statement of need, so it's not meant to say that you support the agency specifically. It's that we believe that there's a need for that. It's that we believe that there's a need for that service in our, in our community.
But we're not specifically saying that these are the only, this is the only ERTS or private outfit that can provide this service, right?
Correct, yep. We wouldn't be saying that.
Okay. So then another question, this goes back to, and I don't know if anybody will remember this, but a few years back, I said at one of the committee, the whole meetings, or some meeting, that why, why couldn't Crow Wing County have our own facility and get reimbursement? Even if Crow Wing, couldn't Crow Wing County create kind of a, a different entity? Or, or let's say, I don't know how we do it, but why couldn't we have our own ERTS? Then we would, and it would be strictly for Crow Wing County residents?
If I can respond a little bit to that, Commissioner Coring, levy. And I'll end my conversation at that. We would have to pay for that building, for those staff, for the care of these individuals. And it's expensive. When you start talking about some of the, not just the medical part of it, but the therapeutic part of trying to help them understand their illness. But when you start hiring psychiatrists at about $250,000 to $300,000 a year, Commissioner, I don't think the county wants to get involved in that because it's a small group of people you're drawing money from, where the state is drawing from all 87 counties to support facilities that they run.
But the only thing is, Steve, is, is if this is a private entity, I would assume that they're making a profit, otherwise they wouldn't do this. So I'm not saying that Crow Wing County would make a profit, but what if we had our own facility and we got the same reimbursement that this organization does? Or wouldn't that work? You know where I'm going?
Uh huh. Commissioner Coring, yeah, I mean, I think that it's definitely something that could be considered. I'm thinking Ramsey County does some of their own services. But as Commissioner Barrows indicated, I mean, some of this would be, could be very costly to us as well. And I'm not sure that we necessarily could exclude. If we take state and federal dollars, we wouldn't be able to exclude or be exclusive to Crow Wing County residents.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to think outside of the box of how to, how to take care of Crow Wing County and Crow Wing County residents.
Mr. Chair and the board, just a quick addition to that. The Greater State of Mind Project that Sourcewell headed up and provided the assessment of need in our community is the foundation of understanding what needs are in our community or in the region. The ARPA application that we brought forward for a mental health continuum staff person through Sourcewell will be able to get, will be able to help us get to those identified needs that we have in our community, in our region. And potentially what might come out of that, I'm not sure at this point, would be additional ERTS facilities or a larger facility with different phases of care. We're not sure what it would look like yet, but that's part of what we want to scope or find out with that additional Sourcewell position that we brought forward to you.
$1,600 bucks a day. Holy mackerel. That's one person for 365 days. One. That provides some opportunity here. And so looking at where the gaps are in our community and developing community-based alternatives to sending somebody somewhere else at $1,600 bucks a day, there is potential. And I think that's what we're looking to explore, is where are those gaps for the needs in our community? And can we do something, to your point, Paul, to keep folks here? Because the residential portion costs us tremendously for these kinds of institutions. So that's what we're trying to accomplish in the project. We're not sure if we can get a decent return on that investment. That's why we want to use ARPA dollars to pilot, to find out. And if it has a decent return on investment, then we can continue that work. And if it doesn't, then the system that we have today is working adequately. But that's what we're after. $1,600 bucks a day, one person, 365. Wow.
One final thing from me. You know, in any of these programs that we invest in, because to me, they're just investments. We don't get to know our outcomes today. But this is one where it appears that what we, when we collaborated with Sourcewell and with the staff doing what they're doing, you guys looked for opportunities and it's paying off. When I look at the graph you have from 2017 to 2021, that's amazing on these DNMC individuals. So we don't know if it'll hold, you know? Mental health is not a very predictable situation, but it certainly has paid its dividends in those five, six years, whatever, two, four, or five years that you're showing on this graph. So I appreciate that very much. And it shows that you guys, the staff, are looking for those opportunities for us. And certainly, from a budget perspective, we appreciate it. But even for the individuals, because it's not good for them to sit in that environment to deteriorate more. I mean, there's back and forth in those facilities. So the sooner you get them out of there, the better chance we have for them to have a quality life returned. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything further?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Your Chair and Commissioners, Mr. Hul. Michelle Moore, it's Public Health Supervisor, bringing to you an update on COVID response here for Crow Wing County. I handed out information today in regards to our current COVID cases in Crow Wing County. And just knowing that these numbers are only as good as the information that is received by MDH. And with the current availability of other testing avenues, such as private facilities that are offering testing, as well as our over-the-counter, these numbers are just a snippet of what we are seeing in our community. And as you're aware, over the last weeks, we've had increases in cases through two, our highest peak here in January, which we contribute to our Omicron variant that has been circulating and that we're seeing as the primary strain of COVID in, in and around Crow Wing County, but also around the United States. That's the current one that we're always, you know, looking also for what's next. And as much as we've wanted to have a crystal ball, I certainly know about six months ago or more, I had brought to you kind of a timeline of what we've seen and the course of this pandemic. And at that time, we were saying, you know, and very hopeful that we were at the end of this. But here we are, six, eight months later, and we're still seeing a lot of transmission of COVID. And we're also seeing people having COVID for the second time. We at Public Health and our partner agencies around us in healthcare and pharmacies continue to vaccinate individuals. We continue to offer to individuals that haven't been vaccinated before, on up to people receiving their third or fourth dose, just depending on their health situations. And so we continue to serve people in their homes, but also having clinics in our public health office, as well as healthcare providing at different opportunities too. So our case count continues to rise. We did see a little dip here at the end of January and we hope to see that continue through February as well. But as you can see, over the last many months here, we have had an increase following a very nice summer where COVID numbers were low. Through the fall, it climbed. And now again, at the peak. So November of 2020, we saw a significant number of cases and that was our last peak that we had. And this, certainly, we far exceeded that. The good news is, most people are having mild symptoms. However, we still continue to have individuals hospitalized and we continue to lose our family and friends due to COVID.
Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you just said the case counts continue to rise. When you say the case counts, what do you mean? What's the definition of that? Does that mean that, that people are testing positive? Or are you saying a case count is a hospitalization? Or what do you mean by that? I guess I don't understand.
What I mean by case count is those positive cases reported to Minnesota Department of Health. And so these are labs that are required to report to MDH. And MDH has been tracking and following up with individuals that have positive tests. And these are just those that are being tracked through MDH. But individuals in the community certainly can test positive or not test at all and have symptoms that aren't reported to MDH. So we continue to see high numbers. Thankfully, those are starting to come down just a bit, but we still are at an all-time high level of cases.
So tell me, how is, are people, are they, are they getting, like, feeling kind of sick and then they go and get a test? Or are people just, I know for a long time there, there was a lot of people that were just testing, 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 and they weren't sick. So are, are people still testing, getting tests all the time? Or are they just testing if they're sick, or if they feel sickly?
Absolutely. That's what we're seeing, is just the range of all possibilities. And that has been the case with COVID. Many of times, people will say to me, have you heard of? And yes, I've heard of it, but there's always a new variable of everything. So yes, people that are in long-term care and healthcare providers are testing on a regular basis. And so they are finding cases that way through repeat testing just to try to catch it as fast as possible. If you think of a long-term care facility, they want to catch it as quickly as possible to not have it transmit to the other residents. As well as our jail. Our jail is testing individuals at a point when they're in, in our facility. And with that, we want to catch it as quickly as possible. Varying healthcare settings, they are having their staff test regularly just as part of good practice for their facility. And just trying to catch it as quickly as possible, on down to the possibilities of someone is coming into the ER and they are not well and they're getting tested when they're there. Or they're testing before surgery. Or the thing that is really hampering, I think, our testing capabilities is people are testing before they're traveling or on their return from traveling. And so our, our facilities that are doing routine testing, they are definitely, you know, stretched with trying to keep up with all of these different possibilities. So we have available, or have had available at different times, rapid tests for individuals that would have difficulties accessing testing, as well as we have some of the Vault mail-in tests available too, to get out into the community and make available testing and a variety of routes, especially when it's difficult for people to access.
Michelle, another couple of questions. So I, when I watch the national news, it shows that a lot of these states, like New York and, I don't know which other ones, but they were saying that the, the hospitalization rates are down like 48%. I, I'm wondering, for Crow Wing County-wise, how is the hospitalization rate? And then what about, you know, people that are from it, to track that too?
Yes. So we met with our regional hospital coordinator just last week. And for the first time, there are beds available, just, but then, I mean, it can be the next moment that it is, that they are full again. But we've had a very, variety of different approaches to help open up beds in our community for those that are positive. There's like a step-down bed, so an individual not COVID case would go to a long-term care facility, be treated as if they were in the hospital, but not at the hospital. And so this step-down-like facility opportunity did make for available beds. And so having those initiatives and those plans put into place and operational has helped with making beds available. Hospitalizations and deaths, we continue, I didn't have a graph for that, but continue to track those over time. And I would say, just in general, during this latest round of Omicron variant, we did see quite substantial numbers of hospitalizations. And I, I guess I would be surprised too, also, as relatively mild that they have presented the Omicron variant, we did have a number of deaths. Quite a few, more than I would have expected. And yet to be seen, did they have Omicron or did they have a different variant? Which, we've had opportunities to learn some of those pieces as far as variants. But when they are pretty sure that the majority of the cases in our area are Omicron, they stop testing the variants and so we stop getting that information as far as how much or who is having what variant. So I don't have good data right now in that regards to variants.
So, so Michelle, that, you're, I guess what I got out of that was that the hospitalization rates are still climbing in Crow Wing County?
They continue to, they continue to be pretty high as far as hospitalizations. And during the last couple of months here, they have been higher than, of course, what we saw over the summer months.
How many, do you know, and if you don't know the answer to this, how many COVID deaths are actually, have we had since the pandemic started in Crow Wing County? Do you have a number on that?
Yep, I do. So in Crow Wing County, we've had 158 deaths confirmed. We do have a number of deaths that are currently being reviewed as well. This is a process for them to review the deaths and make sure that their information is correct, that it is an accurate death related to COVID.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, COVID cases? Otherwise, what I have to bring is a review of the COVID funding that has been allocated to Crow Wing County related to public health. I am not sure if, other than Mr. Hul has, was around when we experienced H1N1 back 2008, '09, '10, this is something that, when, of course, we are responding to something related to public health where it's going to require resources, the state and federal government has provided resources to our locals, as well as to the state to be able to operationalize our plans. And throughout the last two years here, Crow Wing County has been allocated approximately $850,000 to Crow Wing County Public Health for responding to COVID. And wanted to bring that information to you as to where the funds have been used, the different allocations that we have received and the guidance that we received around these allocations on what to use the grant dollars for and how we use them. We've had six different allocations and I broke those out by dollar amount, the amount that we spent on salary and fringe, the amount that we spent on supplies. Some of them allowed for indirect budget line items and then others allowed for incentives to be part of that allocation. The vast majority of the funds were used for salary and fringe. And over the course of the last two years, we've had our staff reallocated from their normal day-to-day jobs to responding for COVID. And so that did draw down a good majority of the funds that we received. 85% of those did go to salary and fringe. During that time, we did have a number of temporary staff join us too, to help us meet the demands related to COVID. We have since let our last one go in the last weeks here and so we are back to our normal staffing volume. And. normal staffing volume and continuing to serve our community with vaccination with the staff that we currently have, as well as completing our other duties with public health and, and our other programs. So I brought a breakdown initially, Crow Wing County received an allocation right away in March to help us respond to COVID. These dollars were vastly related to staffing as well as ramping up with supplies and that included masks, PPE and other hand sanitizers, thermometers and other supplies that we would need for responding. This was in the early, early stages of COVID where we were just learning what the next months and years would be. And so a lot of time was spent on planning and coordinating with other departments as well as coordinating with our partner agencies. The next set of dollars that were sent, allocated to us was related to vaccine planning. This was a small pot that was sent to us and quickly used in the early days of vaccine planning and as well as the early days of us administering vaccine. Cause we did receive that in December of 2020 as well as when the vaccine arrived just a few weeks later. And that was entirely used on salary. The state and federal government had provided us with the, a lot of the supplies that we would need for doing vaccinations. And then earlier dollars that we had received, we had purchased items that we needed that the federal government did not provide to us. So using those dollars and planning ahead for what we were going to need, especially during a time when supplies were at a premium. And unfortunately, the dollar amounts that some of the items cost us at that time were quite high just because of the demand of those items. But thankfully, the, we did receive a variety of supplies that we would need and continue to use now. The third pot of money, vaccine implementation, has helped us through the early part of responding with vaccine clinics for our, our first responders as well as our targeted populations and then on into our general population that we served throughout clinic, clinics that were throughout Crow Wing County, as well as paying for expenses like Sharp's disposal, which is costly, as well as other supplies that we would need for the bigger size clinics that we were offering and also helping us prepare for whatever is next. So a lot of these supplies will be able to, or items, the larger items will be able to be used at future, future needs and events. Our fourth was the COVID funds from the state ARP. This dollar amount was used for incentives for individuals that were seeking vaccine for the first time. The state and federal government have offered a variety of different incentives throughout the course of the summer on in through the fall and currently targeting different groups and ages more so of individuals. And currently, the state is offering for the youngest group of, from the five to 12-year-olds, offering an incentive for individuals to come in and get vaccinated at their healthcare providers or clinics. This one is one that the state made available to us directly at local public health that could offer individuals the gas card at the time of vaccination. And this was just for individuals seeking their first dose. The fifth pot or allocation is the COVID response dollars. This was the largest allocation and I think with that, they wanted to put out the money to us to help with a planning through this year, 2022 and 2023, because they have made this, these funds available to us all the way through the end of the year 2023. This was a large pot and thus far we have spent about 40% of it, with the majority of it being for salary, a little bit for supplies, mileage. And also this one made it possible for us to pay for some of our regular expenses like telephones and also indirect. So to help cover other expenses that we have, including like building rent or our software that we use for tracking staff time to make it easier for doing the invoicing for these allocations back to the state. So the state doesn't actually send us the money upfront, it is an invoice process. So we tell the state how much of it we spent, how we spent it, and then they issue a check back to Crow Wing County. So we still have funds there available to us to use. And then the sixth and final one was the latest that was allocated out for the COVID public health workforce supplement with this targeting COVID vaccine activities, outreach and education and training for our staff. And so these funds are newly allocated to us and at this point, when I ran the report, this is as good as of the end of 2021. So this first quarter has not been billed yet and at that point, we had not spent any of that allocation yet, but working on that at this time. Any questions on the allocations?
Wow.
Just a comment. Wow.
So we don't know if more money is to come, but this is common when we're responding that the state does provide us with more. We still have our regular public health preparedness, emergency preparedness funds that we receive also that are in addition to this that support that work too. And although the majority of that work has been COVID as well, but we work very well with our accounting manager there, Carolyn on the screen with making sure that we're using the funds as they become available and to the fullest.
Very good. So this is saying we're not out of the woods yet?
I wish. I wish we were more than probably anyone, but at this point, we're still continuing working to vaccinate individuals, provide, you know, resources to them as far as testing as well as answering questions. Because even with the amount of education that we provided over the years now, it's not until it affects your household, a lot of times before you pay really attention to the changing guidance too. And it is ever-changing. I know I was listening this morning and we expect that more changes will come as far as guidance for quarantine and isolation, testing. As it has changed, as the variants have changed, the guidance has changed as we learn more. And also with trying to figure out how are we going to get back to normal and what does normal look like? We expect to continue to see these changes from CDC and reeducating our community and reeducating our staff to provide the best guidance at the time.
Michelle, can I ask one other question?
Absolutely.
So Michelle, is this, is this gonna be kind of like, kind of like, and I, I don't mean anything bad by saying this, is it gonna be kind of like the flu or in the future, you know, this virus is gonna kind of be around? And I mean, you know, if you're vaccinated, that doesn't mean you're not going to get it. I mean, we're gonna, we're probably gonna get it, kind of like we get the flu and eventually everybody's gonna probably get it like you get a, I don't know if I'm making any sense, but.
You are.
Yeah.
So that I think is something that is yet to be seen. We definitely have heard the experts compare it to the flu as far as this will be a virus that circulates and, and changes as, such as the flu virus does each year. And that's why people get vaccinated against influenza A and B and whatever other strain that they put in the vaccine each year, cause it does change. They are watching what's happening in the southern hemisphere when they're developing this vaccine and the flu vaccine. Now that's yet to be seen with COVID, if this will become a, a vaccine that we offer to individuals year after year or what that exactly looks like. I think that's still time to be, you know, figured out on what we're going to see or if it will be such as other viruses that come and go and, and then become just a phase in our history and, and then something to write about and lessons to be learned for planning for whatever is going to come next, because that is certainly how we work is preparing for whatever the next possibilities are. But I know this has been a great lesson and learning opportunity throughout this pandemic and thankfully, it's been 100 years and I know in 100 years from now, we will again have experienced a pandemic. The problem is that we won't be here at that time to help the next generation with addressing whatever it is. So hopefully they'll take lessons from what we have learned from this, just as we did from the 1918 and the 1818 influenza pandemics that we've had in the past.
Steve Mills will probably still be on the board 100 years from now, but.
I'm never going away as long as you're here, Paul.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I did read an article this morning that the majority of the cases they're seeing now where people contract COVID are the vaccine people. And of course, that's a larger number than the unvaccinated people, but that there are a lot milder conditions or whatever you want to call them. So we will see this and as it morphs into whatever else, it's gonna, just like the flu, you know, you get vaccinated for one strain of the flu and the other one hits you. So I think we just live in that world and, you know, now the avian flu is coming or avian thing with the birds is coming back and it just cycles through. We're all animals on this earth, so we should just prepare for it. And I think you guys have done a great job in Crow Wing County. So thank you very much.
I appreciate that. I will bring that back to our team of public health and they have done a great job. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
I have to say one quick thing. I forgot that he's the vice chair and the chair left and I keep opening my mouth. I apologize.
Old habits are hard.
Yep, she's ready.
I have one, thank you.
I got one, thank you.
I got two.
Thank you.
It's the same thing though.
Same numbers, I think.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's still morning, right? Yes. I wanted to just quick go over this human services cost report. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on it, but I wanted to just show a few things to highlight some areas. The first thing I'll highlight is that this is a 2019 Minnesota County Human Services Report. That's the most current one available. 2020 will come out in the fall. And then it's really just an overall picture of how our, our costs and our revenue sources for Crow Wing County. And the first column called centralized, those are payments that are made on behalf of our county, but they're made by DHS. So those monies do not flow into our system. The rest of the dollars are pretty much dollars that flow through our system. I think the most important piece that I think calls attention is under the county costs, they're highlighted in blue. Those are the, or the percentages of dollars that are actually coming out of county revenue towards the programs. So I'll give you an example. Our food support, if you look in the green, I think it's the third one down, food support, our total costs throughout the county are $4 million, 4.7. Our county ends up paying 4.93% because of the reimbursements that we, we receive from the federal and state government. In contrast, I'll go down to developmental disabilities where we have a total cost, program cost of $12 billion, $12.6 million. But as you can see, we get a great chunk of federal and state dollars reimbursed. So the county cost is $5,000. So that's a .05% relatively low. So this just gives you a nice snapshot of where our federal dollars come in to assist us with providing these services and where our state dollars come in and then what the county levy dollars look like.
Sheila, it's kind of interesting when you point that food supply out, what the federal money is, but look how little the state is.
States, yes. That is a federal program, so. And I wasn't really sure if there'd be a ton of questions. I just thought this was, would be a great opportunity to kind of give you this layout. And then I also want to take a moment to show you an online dashboard that the state has just developed over the last year. I used to get every year a big packet and I would go through with every county and, not every county, but like our top 10 counties and kind of compare, just to ask the question of how come? Why don't they, why? And now we can go to the website and look at it very easily and anyone can do it. And I just found it kind of interesting. So I thought maybe you'd like to take a moment or two to just take a peek at it. And then if you are interested in looking at it further, please let me know and I'd be happy to walk you through it, cause it's kind of a lot at first. Sophie, do I have control of anything?
No.
No. Oh, shoot. Go down a little bit, please. Oh, yeah, keep going. You're good. And then that total human services cost dashboard, if you click on that and then select a document on the right and just go to human services revenue. Perfect.
This one?
Yeah. And then go down. And here you can select, go up to statistics, sorry. You can select Crow Wing County or whatever county you're interested in looking at. It'll give you the years.
Nice.
2019 is the best you can do for right now and that was probably maybe not our best year. So it'll be, it'll be interesting to see what 2020 and 2021 come up with, just how it differs. But this gives you the picture, just the numbers match what I have, except they're probably rounded. But it shows you the federal, the state, the county, the miscellaneous, gives you some graphs. And you can further go in there and look at mental health or child support or childcare, whatever you want. And it'll, it'll give you that information for any county. So if that's something that seems like it might be interesting to you, please let me know and I can help you walk through it.
I think it really would help us understand what's taking place over there. And then it's sort of that research that is incumbent upon us to perform, to keep ourselves as informed as we possibly can. So I appreciate that. Sheila?
Yeah, I didn't want to go too deep into it, cause it takes a little, a little time to wrap your head around, or at least it did for me.
Why does it take so long to get that?
Well, if you look at the sheer dollars, $176 million and they're, they're grabbing it from all different sources all over. So that's my guess.
They're, they're not done kind of in actual time or, or it just seems like two years?
It does seem like a long time.
The information's a little.
Yeah.
Sheila, just, just a question. So do you think something would have to do with the federal government's fiscal year?
Sure. That's a good point.
Is this, is this a calendar year? That, so that is for the year?
Yes.
And that, if I'm not mistaken, the federal fiscal year start ends September, the end of September and starts on October 1st, correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
And it is a cash basis, annual year, year to year. That's how the report is developed.
Sheila?
Yes.
The presentation that Tammy gave in regards, especially with the mental health. So the savings and reduction there, cause we're showing that, that right now is about 25% of our budget?
Correct.
But that was back in 2019. So this isn't reflecting the effort in this.
So this fall we'll have 2020 numbers and next year we'll have 2021. And I think you will see some, some differences, some significant, that and in out of home placement. So, so another reason I thought, why not bring it to you so you can see it now and then we'll be able to see how good we're. What a great job you guys are doing.
Really?
Well, I will say, you know, and I'm looking at your bigger.
So this fall, we'll have twenty, twenty numbers, and next year, we'll have twenty twenty-one. And I think you will see some, some differences, some significant. That and in out-of-home placement. So that's why, another reason I thought, why not bring it to you? So you can see it now, and then we'll be able to see how good we're. What a great job you guys are doing.
Really?
Well, I will say, you know, and I'm looking at your bigger report here. And it's impressive how your group over there manages and looks for those opportunities. Again, I said that earlier. But I just am impressed with that, because you could sit back and not do much. It would look like on a graph, it's kind of consistent all the way across, except that you're trying to move that dial, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to point out a couple of things in your report. This report ought to upend everybody's perception of what we spend money on. Because the perception generally in the public's mind is that it's exactly the opposite of what you see on this report. To put this into some perspective, we spend a total of a hundred and seventy-six million dollars on community services programs. Of that a hundred and seventy-six thousand, a million, a hundred and twelve million of that is for healthcare. Most of that is for our senior citizens living in nursing homes. Of the hundred and seventy-six we spend, a hundred and twelve is on medical care. Fifty-three of it is on taking care of kids, taking care of people with developmental disabilities, taking care of people that have mental health problems or chemical dependency problems. Fifty-three of the hundred and seventy-six. Ten million is spent on income support programs. Of the hundred and seventy-six million dollars we spend, ten is spent on income support programs. I think the perception in the general public is that it's exactly the opposite. Of our county levy, we levy nine point one million, I'm sorry, eleven and a half million. Ten of it is in developmental disabilities, healthcare, taking care of those with mental illness, taking care of our kids. Ten of eleven point four. The balance is spent on income support, our costs, our match associated with the state and the federal income support programs. This one sheet of paper ought to upend everybody's perception of what we spend money on. Unfortunately, my experience suggests it will not.
Thank you.
Makes for good talking points, though, we can be honest about the facts.
Good job.
So we have a closed session?
Mr. Chair, a motion would be in order to go into closed session, and it is for the purposes of discussing security briefing. And I just Xed out, so I will get you the statute number in a second here.
I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
Minnesota statute thirteen D point oh five subdivision three D to discuss campus security with the sheriff and chief deputy.
Regarding to that statute, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, Mr. Barrows, second by Commissioner Brecken to move into closed session.
Commissioner Coring?
Aye.
Commissioner Brecken?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrows?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoag?
I think we will reconvene. I don't think there will be any action. So reconvene to adjourn. Nope, I'm not expecting any.
Okay.
You can stick around if you want to.
Okay.
There it is, right there, damn it. We're done?
Done.
Okay, we'll call an end to the.